Okay. Okay, we're gonna start off, I would entertain a motion to open the budget hearings.
I move.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. And then, we need to close the budget here, or recess the budget hearings, excuse me, until after today's regular meeting.
Vote on the motion.
Okay, vote on the motion first, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. And then, we need a motion to recess until after
So moved.
our regular meeting today.
Second.
Got a motion from Larry, second from Jessica. Roll call, please.
Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander, I'm sorry, Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Okay, and now, I'll welcome everybody to the Delaware County Council meeting, September 22nd, and I'll turn that off. 9:00 AM. And we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we'll start off with pledge. Everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Jessica, you want to start us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Present.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yeah.
Ms. Piper?
Here.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Okay, let's see. Once again, I'm gonna direct any public comments to the county council website, that's And Denise, was the agenda posted?
Yes.
And advertised?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Need an approval of the agenda?
I move.
Second.
Got a motion by Jessica, second by Ryan. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Okay, and we need an approval of the minutes.
That, yes.
Yes, sorry. I was getting ahead of myself. Need approval of the minutes of last regular meeting, and Denise is gonna work on, or working on, minutes from the special meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
So move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Ryan, second from Jessica, any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
And we'll move on to the financial and transfer agenda.
(coughing)
Communications.
We're starting with transfers.
Communication center. I, in finance, we discussed, I couldn't figure out why he had such big transfers in for FICA and PERF. I went back over the figures, and I sent them to Paul. PERF is just a few dollars short, FICA is okay, but I'm gonna recommend that you change both those to 2,000, just in case between now and the end of the year, he transfers from a non-personal service up into something up there, and that would cover it. But the PERF is definitely a little short, FICA is okay, but that would just give us, just in case something would come up, so.
You're talking about line 172 and 171?
Yes. Okay. So 122B minus $10,280.53, C 122 plus $10,280.53, 367 telephone backup center, make that minus 2,000, and 172 PERF plus 2,000, 367 telephone backup center, make that minus 2,000, 171 FICA plus 2,000, 367 telephone backup center minus 4,000, 129 OIC plus 4,000, 367 telephone backup center minus 371, 177 education incentive plus 371, total request zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Jane, second from Jessica. Can you tell me again, line 367?
Which one?
Line 3, or 367 where it says, tell me that minus 4,000, does that stay the same?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that one's the same.
Okay.
It says minus 5,000.
I'm looking on down, it's the second.
Oh, down there.
I was with her until right there. Okay, any discussion on that?
I'm totally confused, but I'll take her word for it.
Where, how can we, how can we clear you up? You okay?
I'm okay.
All right. Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Hey, Circuit Court, A 155 probation officer minus $8,141, B 155 probation officer plus $8,141, A 168 court reporter minus $17,121, B 136 assistant court reporter minus $13,644, 441 office equipment plus $30,765, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ron. Emily, you want to explain?
Morning, Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. So, we had a probation officer that resigned, so we had to replace, this is our pretrial probation officer, so if we don't replace this, these people will go back into jail or on the GPS program. So they have, they have right now, between the two of them, they have 197 clients, so at least, their cap is 120, so 70 of those people would go back in jail, 77, if we go down to one pretrial probation officer, at this point. The other part of this, the court reporter and the assistant court reporter, that's all going into my 441 account. This is what I explained to you at the budget hearings, I spent 20, over $20,000 to provide for COVID issues. I have to put that back in plus, to get my maintenance plan for my computers back in there, so it's covering what I've spent plus. I have to cover my computer maintenance plan, and then I have to cover a few things to purchase at the new facility.
We had some discussion in Finance Committee, these are COVID monies that you guys had expended out, that we're expecting that will be covered, do you think?
We're hoping that, yeah, I've issued, or I've submitted all of these claims back to the CARES Act, don't know when that'll come in, and Donna has not been told when they expect that to come in, they said that they've submitted everything, but if that does come back into my accounts, then I won't spend the money, it'll just sit there, and that's what we're told, that it should come back into the accounts that were spent out of. But I couldn't wait to find out, I had to get these back into my line items, but if that 20-some thousand comes back in, they'll just, it'll just sit, instead of me spending it.
Tell me again, what you are using that money for?
I have a $16,000 computer replacement plan I do on the 441 account, and then 20,000, I spent over 20,000 of that, so plus, where I had to transfer money around, on COVID. So I'm replacing that money, plus I had to buy counter, reception counters for the new facility for each courtroom, plus a mail sorter, plus some shelving. That's what I'm purchasing with all of that, is the computers, the shelving, the reception counters, and the mail sorter. It leaves me like $2,000 in that account in case anything else comes up, but if it doesn't, then it'll stay. But I was just told today I have to buy a riser for the courtroom for trials, because the podium won't work, so I don't know how much that's gonna cost me, but again, I'll turn that in for COVID reimbursement, because we're having to adjust everything in these trials due to COVID, so everything I purchased that is affected by COVID will go right back to COVID CARES Act.
Is the COVID reimbursement, is that 100%, or is it just like everything else works?
It's 100% is my understanding. Yeah, if it's, if we're purchasing anything because COVID is affecting, like, just every single thing we've purchased so far, because we've had to adjust courtrooms, we've had to purchase the barriers, we've had to purchase all the PPE supplies, now I'm having to purchase this riser because we've had to readjust the courtroom, I had to purchase folding tables, tablecloths, all this stuff, because of COVID, I turn it into CARES Act, and my understanding, it's 100% reimbursable. It just, we just don't know when, yeah. Could be this year, could be next.
I think it's important that that be in the minutes, is the reason I ask.
Sure.
Half of this report is paid by a grant, correct?
Right, that was that half that I gave back to for next year's budget, but I held on to it because I don't know when I'm getting that money, but again, if I get that money, it'll just sit in County, it'll just go back to County General. I'm just moving it now, so I can have it to do what I have to do with it.
It'll revert back at the end of the year.
Right.
Yeah.
It'll revert back, because I won't touch it.
You're not turning the expense of the move into the new building as part of the COVID reimbursement?
No, I can't, I can't turn that in.
I just want to make that point.
Right. Only the stuff I've purchased in order to make trials happen, make court hearings happen, that's what I can turn in.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question while she's here, that's sort of germane? Will you accept the request of a council member that anything and everything that costs you to move, we be informed of that in writing?
Like, keep track of what it's costing, out of my pocket?
Whatever, yes, everything, anything you had to buy new?
Yeah, I can give you a list of what I've spent, but I'm...
I mean, from now till you get moved.
Yeah, as far as I know, this is all I have to spend, but I can give you that list.
Okay.
Okay?
Appreciate it.
Hey, Health Department, 104, which is Environmental Health Specialist, minus 20,000, 196 overtime, plus 20,000, total request zero.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion from Larry, second from Jessica, discussion on this?
I guess there was discussion in Finance, I guess, I know it was, I was there, about this line item, being a new line item, and it's currently to be used to pay someone that has accumulated overtime according, from COVID. Jamie?
I don't see.
I'm, I'm a little concerned, I don't think we discussed, we're doing two things here, we're...
The alcohol.
We're covering overtime for an expense that was COVID, but we're also creating a new line item that's not been in their budget before, is that correct?
And nobody's here, so you usually don't approve it when people don't show up.
Is this, is this something he brought up when it came to cop time? Is that what this is from COVID-related?
I believe so, yeah, that was the discussion, there was some discussion after he left.
It's for a nurse that's retiring.
It's for a nurse that's retiring.
And, and she has accumulated a lot of overtime, but we're doing two things here, we...
It's for more than one person.
Well, is it for more than one person? I thought he just said a nurse, well, maybe I missed that.
I thought he said...
Nonetheless, we're...
I thought he said more than one person, but one person is getting ready to retire at the end of the year, and she's got a lot of...
I guess I could ask Mr. Hughes, then, can we approve this overtime temporarily? I don't know, I'm not so sure I want to create that new line item. I've seen so many times, in my experience in this government, that we create a new line item, and then it's eventually lost in the basket of money over the years when chairs change, and one of the perfect examples of that is the consultant line item in the commissioner's office, which I was a part of creating, it was to pay the lawyer to defend us in a lawsuit in federal court, it was $100,000, now we appropriate $150,000, and it's used for, well, I pulled the claims for 2019, it's quite interesting what it's used for, but it's not used for its original intent, and that's why I'm concerned about doing this, because the original intent here is, may be to cover COVID costs, but once we establish that line item, and the bodies change in the chairs, it's there forever. I need to know, can we do this as a separate item without creating that new line item?
That line item, just so you know, once we set it up in the budget, that line item will always show up, but it won't have any dollars in it unless they request dollars and you guys approve it, but the line will be there with zero. Come January, you'll still see that, when we print out his expenses, you'll still see that account number, there just won't be any money in it.
I have a question, why is this any different than, let's say, somebody retiring from the, let's say, the sheriff's department, and we don't let them hire until all of that...
That's a good question.
Until that money is available, or, or the auditor's office, I mean, if Donna would retire, we would tell Steve that he couldn't replace her until she was paid out, we wouldn't pay her in a lump sum.
That's why I was wondering if we could make this as a special item for COVID expense, if this overtime was truly during that window of time, without, and I mean this sincerely, it was in about 1982 that we created that fund in the commissioner's budget. People change, the chairs are always here, but the people change, and they don't know what's happening, and I don't want to create a line item for COVID, and then 10 years from now, when most of us are not on the council, or some of us, the next group might not know that, and they'll approve a budget for that, and it'll be used for whatever. And we're not in financial condition to be creating any new line items, in my opinion, just my opinion.
Well, you're kind of opening up a can of worms for everybody else to come and say they want paid for their COVID overtime.
You're exactly right, that's my concern, yes ma'am. Sometimes Donna and I do agree.
I mean, yeah, and I'm sure they put in numerous hours with the position they're in, but you also had other departments that did the same thing, so.
Well, I think since, since the Health Department is not here, I think we...
You usually don't approve it anyway, if they don't show up.
I was gonna say. Too bad.
Okay, I've said enough, go ahead, Mr. President.
Well, the other thing, we, if you guys, I mean, it's, it's up to you on what you, where you want to go with it, I mean, it could be tabled till next month, you can vote it down right now, vote it up right now, it's up to whatever you guys want to do.
Well, I think in respect to Jamie, if he's on his way, we'll, I'd say let him come.
Why don't we move on?
Do something else.
Move on to the next line item?
I have a motion.
That's, we have a motion, well, why don't we, can we get a motion to table?
Sure.
Till he returns.
Motion to table.
Okay, got a motion from Ron.
Second.
Second from Jessica, roll call, please.
Ron and Jess, a few seconds. Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
When we bring it over the table, I didn't get an answer from Mr. Hughes, so don't forget that, I'm gonna ask that.
Don't forget to ask it.
So the other motion's still active, right?
Yes.
So, I need to, I need to do this.
We'll do that.
Get my papers messed up. Okay, moving on to the jail. B 148 minus $19,485.20, C 148 plus $19,485.20, E 132 minus $11,915.75, F 132, lordy, plus $11,915.75, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Jane. Any discussion on this?
Those numbers, I'm lost again.
Page two, Ron.
Top of page two, the regular transfer.
Yeah.
You don't have the rate transfer in front of you, regular transfer.
It's right here.
Right there.
Oh, God, God.
Too many papers.
Too long since I read this stuff.
Ron, it was just last Thursday at Finance.
I do have marks on it, see there, I have read them, just in case you guys want to know.
It was last Thursday at Finance.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I just couldn't find it.
When's last Thursday?
Yeah, what the heck, I've slept since then.
Who's on first?
Back with us?
I'm okay.
All right, okay. We did ask in Finance whether these were absolutely necessary to refill at this, at this time, and you want to go ahead and respond to that for the rest of the council?
Whether we replace or we don't, we're gonna burn up overtime, at this point, we're, we're running short, so we're having to take and make people work double shift, or shift and a half, bring someone in early, someone leaves late, so we can't keep doing that, we've got to replace them. Right now, I'm down to 1,700 in our overtime budget, and we're about $7,000 a month by not filling positions that I've been asked to leave empty, so we can't keep doing it.
Do you have a list of potential employees most of the time, or?
We do, they go through a training or a schooling, so that they've got a list, who all passes, the background, the MPIs and all those things, but we exhaust it pretty quickly.
I know one time you didn't, so I just wanted to see how that was, yeah.
No, we do have that.
Well, I know what's happening, because I updated my iPhone, I don't know what I've done different, I'm getting texts and emails every time a jailer calls off or needs a day or whatever, I don't know how that happens.
Yeah, I just got that too.
Yeah.
It just happened to mine too.
Yeah, let me know how you figure that out.
Yeah, I know.
Got a special phone.
Any more questions from council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Sheriff, 135 LT minus, change that figure to $2,250, this was at the request, to B 101 Sheriff, plus $2,250.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ron, discussion on this? I think this is one that was on last month, we got things cleared up between then, and the amounts reduced.
Just for the record, so the public will know, the sheriff's salary is now established by the state representatives and senators in their budgetary process, they totally changed the way we pay sheriffs, they're paid by a percentage of the prosecutor's salary, which is set by the state, so this is not anything we can avoid locally, which, I've been to meetings at the state where they'll tell people, "Well, go back and talk to your local elected officials, we don't set budgets," you'd be surprised how many budgets they set.
That's a joke, they do set budgets, it's an absolute joke.
There are many line items that they have a...
I was in a meeting in Marion, Indiana, one time, when we were arguing about stuff like that, and there were two representatives there, and they didn't know what to say when I challenged them.
Well, that's challenging for us, you know, when it comes to, especially in a situation.
We get the blame in a quote-unquote, you know, like it's our fault, but it's not necessarily always our fault.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander? Lit jail, 103 jailer minus $10,756, A 103 jailer plus $10,756.25, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Jane, on that, any discussion? Same questions we're asking in our Finance meeting on this position.
Can I ask the same question I did then? Can that be changed to correctional officer on these forms?
Yes.
Think it's more appropriate.
That's what it's called in the budget, correctional officer.
I know, but it's just, this is on, I want people to know what things are, what the facts are. When you read it, you read jailer, I'd rather you read correctional.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
911, B 103 supervisor minus 1,500, C 102 supervisor minus 1,0489.25, D 102 supervisor minus $7,455.10, 197 overtime plus $10,434.35.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Larry. This is moving money out of the supervisor positions to overtime, you're short in overtime.
Yep.
Trying to make it up inside your budget.
Yep, we're like Sheriff's Department being short, I've got no part timers working the floor, and I've got a class that's ongoing, so I'm having to pay overtime until those people get up to speed.
Any questions from council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
An eligible homestead, 199 longevity minus $1,125, FICA plus $750, PERF plus $375, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ron. We did ask some questions on Finance on this, you want to explain it to the rest of the council there?
It's for, longevity was putting out budget in air during current budget sessions last year, and we're going to be short in FICA and PERF, because that's where my chief deputy pay came from, and we forgot to do the FICA and PERF.
Very good. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.[1745.16]
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Okay, first addendum starts... First addendum starts with the jail. D 141 minus $644, 197 overtime plus $644. E 134 minus $487, 197 plus $487. C 148 minus $8,278, 197 plus $8,278. D 120 minus $2,962, 197 plus $2,962. D 153 minus $154, 197 plus $154. F 132 minus $644, 197 plus $644. C 101 minus $1,683, 197 plus $1,683. F 140 minus $3,104, 197 plus $3,104. E 161 minus $882, 197 plus $882. 195 minus $20,000, 197 plus $20,000, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ron.
Is this the overtime issue you were talking about just now?
Yes.
Any other questions from council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Jail, F 140 minus $11,735.42. G 140, these are correction officers, plus $11,735.42. D 161 Cook minus $10,772.96. E 161 Cook plus $10,772.96, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Larry, second from Jessica. Any questions on those?
Find a new cook?
Yes, we did.
Did you get a chef?
No. No.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Lit jail, I've got some corrections to read, so.
Okay.
Okay, first one, 113 correctional officer minus $1,550. The next line should say 173 health insurance plus $1,550. A 106 correctional officer minus $257. The next line should say 173 health insurance plus $257. 109 correctional officer minus $257. The next line should say 173 health insurance plus $257. B 114 correctional officer minus $2,608. Next line should say 173 health insurance plus $2,608. 103, A 103 correctional officer minus $451, 197 overtime plus $451. B 112 correctional officer minus $5,169, 197 overtime plus $5,169. C 115 jailer, or correctional officer minus $128, 197 overtime plus $128. 111 jailer correctional officer minus $9,404 into A 111 correctional officer plus $9,404, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ron. Any discussion?
There's another page on me.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
We've got one more addendum. We got another addendum.
Yeah, but you haven't voted.
Oh, sorry. That's in the discussion here for Larry. Okay.
You haven't voted.
Oh, yes, sorry.
You have it, yeah.
I let all that happen, yeah.
Okay. Second addendum is public defender. D 164 minus $491.13, C 164 plus $491.13, total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Larry. This, this was one that you guys had brought in late to finance?
Yes, it is.
Right, okay, and we've added it as an addendum item?
Yes.
Any questions? From council on that, did you guys get everything worked out with that?
We, we did, well, not everything, that's why I hesitated there. We have the meetings from the minutes from the meeting where that employee was hired, and he was the only applicant, and the board voted to hire him. The board is having a special meeting this Friday. That was about as soon as we could get it scheduled so that I could get it published and everything. They're having a special meeting to determine that the board will completely supervise that employee and that he, that our chief PD will have no supervision over that employee. So if a judge has a complaint, you know, or a client has a complaint about that public defender, that complaint will go straight to the board, not to our chief PD. I have the minutes from the meeting that was held when he was hired. If you would like me to go ahead and pass those out, and then I will be distributing the minutes from the meeting after next, after this coming Friday's meeting to clarify supervision of that employee.
Okay.
Donna, will you make sure that goes in our record with Denise?
Denise?
Yep.
Both now and the next meeting? I think our motion should probably say that we are approving it subject to clarification of that hiring of that employee. And just for the record for the general public that might be interested, this particular employee is related to the director, and state statute has a, what do we call that?
Nepotism?
Nepotism.
Nepotism statute. So the board is hiring this person.
I mean...
This was something that was caught in finance, and, and I think they're, they're clearing or getting this cleared up.
Yes.
Pam? Do you, do you have any issues with where we're at with this?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
It was all done correctly.
Can you, can you stand up to the podium just real quick and just say that on the record, so we have it? Thank you.
Pam McCammon, human resource director, I agree with the situation. They've done their homework, and he's very more than qualified for the position.
Okay, is there a... Would council want to make that subject to the outcome of the meeting on Friday?
Should we wait until the meetings occurred on Friday, and then we make this decision?
Donna?
We have to have this, she's got the account in the red by this amount, we have to have this transfer. He was overpaid on the last paycheck because he, he was supposed to leave, and he ended up staying, and she paid him out of that account, and there was no money in that account. We have to get the account out of the red.
Yes, even if, even if...
This has been paid out already.
Right.
So this transfer, 400 and whatever it was, 461 dollars, or 491 dollars, that's to get the account out of the red, because they've already paid him. Moving forward, then that's up to you guys with the nepotism, but he's already been paid this amount of money.
The former employee has.
Yeah, the former employee.
We're following the...
This is not this nepotism problem, this is the former employee.
And there was never any question about his qualifications?
Right.
This amount is to pay out to the former employee?
It's already been paid out. She paid it out, and there was no money there, so...
That's what I mean, and then there'll be a transfer next month?
Actually, we won't need a transfer, I have more than enough money to pay into the new hire line because he's at 90% for 90 days anyways, so I, when I transferred funds into the new employee line, I, I transferred enough thinking that our old employee was going to be working till August 21st, which was when his resignation letter stated. He asked Mr. Bryan if he could stay till September 1st, having to do with PERF being vested, and, you know, it was just like, oh, sure, I understand, and then we thought, uh-oh. Don't once the auditor's office called me, it's like, okay, that is an issue, he stayed, you know, so many more days that it put the account in the red, so I had to, we have to get that money back in there from the new pay line. Whoever that ends up being has to go back into that account to get that out of the red.
At this point, we've got a motion and a, and a second on the floor. Any changes to that? Roll call, please.
Since she's explained that it's for the
Former.
Former employee, that...
Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. And...
Jamie's here.
Jamie's here.
Yeah. That's where we're going, I think, unless Donna's got something else.
That's all the transfers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning, council.
Don't you have to, do you have to vote to bring it off the table?
Yeah.
I'll move to bring it off the table.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion to bring this line item off the table from Jessica, and a second from Larry. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard, Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Now, we have a motion and a second on this line item to consider. Any questions from council?
So while you weren't here, you were all discussing what was talked about in finance meeting, and is this for one employee or multiple employees?
The bulk of this is one employee, but this will be multiple employees as well. I'd like to pay out as much of the comp time, RT, overtime, whatever you guys, whatever term is used that was gained over the course of this pandemic under this budget, because this is reimbursed by cares. At least, by my estimate, probably 16,000 is going to one person out of that 20,000 transfer.
I believe you've already approached us about this too, correct?
Yes.
For some reason, I, I feel like we've had a conversation.
This, the way I see it, these hours have to be paid out anyways. If it goes out now, it's going out under this year's budget, reimbursed by cares. The employee that has the bulk of these hours will be retiring most likely December, so if it's not paid under this budget, it's coming out of next year's. You guys know better than anybody how tight budgets are next year, I can't afford to take that out of next year's. This person is, who does our preparedness and is our nursing supervisor, so I also can't afford to not have that position filled.
Is, is this, this money that, that you're paying has overtime, is it above and beyond their normal work week?
Yes.
So, so they've worked their, their normal work week, and this is above and beyond that? Okay, and, and in no way are they being compensated because they were working during COVID time? This is just...
This is straight overtime for what they're, I mean, they work 32 and a half hours under the county's budget, that's what their salary is, that's what their paychecks are for. Every hour over that goes into a bank, that's what they're being, she's being paid for here. I believe, as far as I understand, every department does this, is that news?
It's accrued time.
It's accrued time.
And it would have to be paid out no matter what?
Be a question for human resources.
Is that, is that accurate? Right, right, I'm just, for the record.
Right.
Well, the thing is, we set a policy a few years back that this needed to be paid out of existing appropriations, not a new appropriation.
We've never had an appropriation for
And that's what I'm
That payment.
Arguing about, if you weren't here, but when we pass this the way it is now, we'd be establishing a new line item for overtime in your department, which has never been there before, and I'm not sure I want to vote yes for that, but I don't want to vote no to cover this COVID if it's reimbursable. I don't know how that can work, I need help on that. Don't want to establish that overtime in your department for people filling the chairs later on, not just necessarily you, but council members, et cetera.
Jamie, I think the only, only question is, is the line item, I don't think it, for me, it's not necessarily the payout. It's just the actual line item, and does that continue to, does that stay there? Does it, does it grow in time, does it, you know, is it, is it making? I guess in a sense, is it making government bigger? It's not necessarily, is it creating more to your budget? Not necessarily, I don't know, and that's kind of, I guess, the, the question that we all have is, is it being a new line item, what does that mean?
I think the 2021 budget, it's not there, so I think that answers that question. It's in this year's budget to make this payout.
And that's the only reason?
The only reason.
I, I think also if you ask Pam, the handbook says she can't carry more than 80 hours of comp time anyway, it has to be paid out. How many?
70.
Oh, change to 70?
I think it's always been 70, oh, I don't have my handbook in front of me, I could look it up, but 70 to 80 hours. And I've been fully, I've been fully aware of that
Either way.
This entire time.
Yeah.
And if
I mean, that's...
You know, if we had a crew of volunteers that wanted to take on that job, I happily would have let them, but we didn't have that.
Right.
But I don't think anybody's arguing with the, you know, I mean, I don't think that's the case. I think we're just worried about the line item, does it stay, does it disappear?
It's in this year's budget, I mean, we, I...
Like I said, the line item's always going to show up in his budget from now on. It'll just say zero, it won't have a, it won't have a dollar amount.
Can we stipulate in our motion that this is 196 COVID?
Label it some way, yeah.
COVID 2020 reimbursable expenses, something like that.
But is every hour you're paying out because of COVID? Or is it just because she, she's a comp, she's accumulated some prior to COVID?
She may have been around the 80, 90 mark, if I'm remembering right, when the pandemic hit.
See, so if you limit it to that, he's only going to be able to pay her COVID overtime if you limit it to...
Yeah.
So then he's still going to have an issue to pay her out when she retires.
And the reason I went over a little bit on what I thought would be paid to her is trying to pay other people down on what was gained over COVID. One, for the reimbursement, but two, trying to plan ahead on this. I personally don't foresee this massive second wave, but we're being told to plan for one. So my remaining nurses are going to absorb that work after she retires. I'd rather have them starting at zero, or at least a low number, when we go into that.
Are you talking after first of the year? From that, or?
Yeah.
Three, okay. Any more questions from council?
Just remember, when another office holder comes in and somebody is retiring, we're going to say you cannot fill that spot until that money is all gone.
You're right, Jane, that's...
That's the only thing that, that concerns me.
Done that to get a handle on budgets, yes ma'am, you're right.
We have, I mean, we've done that to the sheriff, we, yeah.
I was trying to get this to be a special issue, but I'm not getting there.
Wait, like if you limited it to, like you said, if you want to title it overtime due to COVID, then he's just not going to be able to pay out all of her comp time that was prior to COVID, because I'm assuming you tracked that.
And I'm okay with that, if that's what pleases the council, I'm happy with doing that.
Then when she retires, he's going to have to take what comp time's left out of her line item.
Which means he will not...
I mean, you don't have no choice. I'm just, I'm just saying, if you limit it to that, then that's all he's going to be able to
He'll not be able to replace that person until that
Pays that out.
Right, just like normal, right.
Which would be somewhat minimal, or maybe minimal in comparison to the bulk of this, the COVID hours as well.
So do you have a number of dollars that, that is affected by COVID?
Instead of 20,000?
20,000 as my max, that's all I know.
Pardon?
I have 20,000 put in as my max. I had estimated Susan's payout at around 16,000.
But how much of her 16 was COVID? Well, I mean
I, I'm sorry, I don't know.
That's what we need to approve. This is exactly what COVID is. And then stipulate this 196 COVID overtime.
I don't
Jamie, do you, do you have to have this approved today, or can we recalculate that and come back next month?
We could probably recalculate and come back, and it'll probably be different by the time I come to speak to you because her hours are up and down and up and down depending on what's going on. She's, I could have other staff doing it that are lower in accrued hours right now. But the reality is, it would still be, ultimately be the same payout. And she's the one who's managed this from the very beginning. She's the one who knows exactly what's going on, how to do what she's been doing all along. And I'd rather keep it that way.
Continuity.
Early on, we had, we attempted to split it out between nurses, and we discovered there was a lot of hassle and issue with that. They're working with five different state database systems where they're having to go in constantly throughout the day, check for cases, try to track these cases down. It's easier when one person is doing it and serves as the clearinghouse for that.
Is this a position that we created a special job description way back when? Before we started doing special job descriptions to increase that salary? Is that disposition?
I don't believe so. She's under a line that's just public health nurse. So she's actually
She's always been a public health nurse. I mean
I don't know, I'm just curious.
For the record, she should have a special description considering she's doing that work, preparedness work, and supervision of the department or of her division.
We want to say one thing. Instead of her losing her hours, like, I think there was a comment made that
Go to the podium.
Yeah. Okay with that?
Go to the podium.
Okay. Cam, Cam and HR, you'd made the comment that it was okay if she didn't get paid out all of her hours. Why couldn't she use that on vacation? Could she take time off? She can use comp time. Let her use it instead of lose it. I mean, she's earned it.
Yeah.
That's my
She's not going to lose it.
I would have to pay it out under our budget.
You'll have to pay it out after she retires. It may have to come out of next year's budget.
Not if she uses the comp time.
Yeah, not if she uses it. But she's not going to lose it if she can't use it.
You'll just not hire somebody until she's paid out, right?
When she gets her
Okay, okay, I, I've just caught the end of that then.
That's what, that's what we're trying
You'll just have to pay it out when she retires at the end of the year.
Okay.
And that
I just don't want to see her
That would come out of next year's budget anyway because the last so many days of the year come out next year. Then he would have to pay her remaining comp time out of next year's budget and just not replace that person until
Until that's paid out, okay.
Until that time.
We need a COVID number here. I'm making a motion to table
A motion to table from Ron.
Department request.
I need a second.
Second.
Got a second from Jessica.
Hang on, I got to find me a blank. Guys.
Say the motion, what was the motion again?
Table it.
To table this request for 20,000 so it can be adjusted to cover COVID expense.
That, does that work okay?
That works fine. I, I
So you're tableing it until October?
Right.
I expect the number to be at or above 20,000, so that works for me.
Hey, I need a roll call. There's no discussion on tabling.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was Ron and Jess.
Okay.
Mr. Bloodso?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
And Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
Get everybody.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
So what do I do with this first motion?
We're still got financial.
I know, hang on. I just want to get this crap back in order.
Nobody voted on it.
Right.
To table.
Nobody voted on this, but we made a new motion to table.
Yeah.
So this motion's still active for next month.
Active for next month, yeah.
That's Jessica.
Okay. Okay, coordinating counsel to grant alcohol and drug abuse. Executive Director, 11,420. Three prevention education grants, 20,502. Six intervention treatment grants, 17,758. Two justice law enforcement grants, 7,421. Total request, 57,101.
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Larry. Most of these, what we're going to see, these grants are, it's just this time of the year for the grants. I think they're on a fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so we're seeing those come in.
Yep.
They always do this. They request this money once a year. Well, normally, I'll say.
Yeah.
Kind of had a little screw-up last year, but
Any discussion from counsel on that or questions from counsel?
So is this first page all grants?
Yes.
Looks like it.
Very much.
Okay.
People's departments.
Yeah, this is
Then can we make a motion to approve them all since they're at one time, since they're grants? Do we have to read each one individually?
They're different departments.
They're different departments would be the only
What are you asking?
If she can approve all of these at the same time.
But I do have to read them.
All the grants.
Oh, these are all different people.
They're all different grants.
Yeah, they're not related to one another, so I, yeah, you need to do them individual.
Probably need to read them in.
All right.
Yeah.
Thanks though, Jane. Any, any questions from counsel on that? Roll call, please.
Okay, Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodso?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Guess you couldn't streamline them by just announcing the grant and the total amount.
Okay, yeah, so you're approved. Becky's got some paperwork for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
JDAI.
JDAI. 211, supplies, $6,772. 304, monitoring clients, $16,669. 396, travel and training, $29,011.88. Don't do cents. 441, equipment, $5,950. Total request, $58,402.88.
Donna, before you guys make the motion, you said 211 supplies is, I've got on my sheet, 212.
Oh, I'm sorry, 212 supplies, yes. I'm used to supplies being 211.
So it's 212. Need a motion to approve.
I moved.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Ryan. Any questions from counsel? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodso?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander. Voca, 101, child and home school visitor, 1, $4,000. 102, child and home school visitor, 2, $7,000. 104, family court or family recovery court case manager, $9,500. Total request, $20,500.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Any discussion from counsel? Anything you'd like to tell us?
I just want to remind the counsel that this is a reimbursable grant.
Better be.
Hey, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, and these are, these grants are the ones that kind of make your budgets look funny at budget time when you're trying to approve these because they haven't been
This grant and about three other ones that I work with, I, I work with several funds. So, yeah, that's what makes it so fun.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodso?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Family recovery court grant, 101, program coordinator, $4,802. 171 FICA, $368. 172 per, $538. Total request, $5,788.
Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion from Ron, second from Jessica. Any questions from counsel? Anything you'd like to say, Emily?
Hi.
Hi.
This is that half-paid court report. It's half out of county, half out of the grant. This is just to cover the rest of the year from September, or October 1st on.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodso?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sales disclosure. 316, pictometry, $5,000. 362, exoft, $11,000. Total request, $16,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Any discussion?
It's just a fund we use for paying for hardware, software, and training. That's what it's used for. And it's a portion of every sales disclosure that comes through the county, goes into that fund.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bloodso?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
EMS capital improvement, 441. Ambulance rechassis, $141,783. Total request, $141,783.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Any questions from counsel on this one? You want to give us just a quick update on which, which bus this was? This was the one that
This is the one we bought, Mike Ashley Delaware County MS. This is the ambulance we bought a couple of years ago from Madison County for $25,000. It's a Chief XL. To buy it new would be about $235,000. It came with the load system and cot already in it, which is worth about $50,000. But it's 15 years old, so this was in the plan to get it rechassis on a new chassis. And they'll strip it down, and it will be basically a brand-new ambulance for about less than half the cost of a new ambulance. So, and we should get a good 10
How long does, I was going to say, how long does it last, those chassis?
Oh, we'll get, we'll get 10 or, 10 or 11 years out of it for sure. Maybe more than that.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodso?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Opoide Grant, 101, peer recovery coach, $21,624. 102, recovery specialist, $38,376. Total request, $60,000.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Larry. Any questions from counsel on this? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodso?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Special state distribution, 233, by two minutes aggregate, $13,339.14. Total request, $13,339.14.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Jessica, second from Ron. This is an appropriation to buy material.
Correct.
And close out the account.
Yes.
Close out the account, yeah.
It was a one-time deal back in 2016, and so this will take the money off the books.
Why are you using this?
Roll call, please.
All right. Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodso?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
That's it.
Okay.
Why are you in a new hat?
We're going to have to, yeah, we're going to have to give you a water break or something. We're going to have to, yeah, we're going to have to give you a water break or something. Okay, we need a motion.
Sure. Motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring freeze ordinance, twenty twenty dash zero one five.
Second.
Got a motion from Jessica, second from Ryan. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Okay.
Scott, may I say something?
Yes. Baby.
Mary asked me if I would stand in for her at the finance meeting, and I think almost everybody in this room was at the finance meeting, and I think that is such a help to the, to the council, and I think you're a help to each other. You know, I think it helps if one department understands the, what another department's going through. So I thank all of you for coming to the finance committee and sharing your problems and helping with others. That's all.
Thank you, Jane. I don't think we have any committee reports. No ordinances, no resolutions. We do have the Harrison Town, this is under new business, Harrison Township Capital Improvement Plan, which, did you guys, did we send everybody a copy on that?
Yep.
Yeah, everybody's got a copy of that, and basically what we're asked to do is help me out, Donna, just say that we reviewed.
It just needs to be stated in the minutes that you did review this. This is something we've never done before. Once they reach an excess in their funds, they have to establish a capital improvement plan. The problem is, they have until September thirtieth by statute to approve this plan, but the law also says that the council must review it at its August meeting. So, no, August. So I called the state and asked about it, and they said they know, you know, what the law says, that in order to cover council, you just have to say that you did receive this and you did review it. You don't have to take any votes or anything, so, but the minutes have to state that all council has reviewed the plan.
I did review it, and I had some questions.
Kind of crazy, but.
From Donna. I talked to Donna a little bit about it, and it sounds like to me that it's allowing them to use some unused funds for different purposes. I, I didn't quite.
That's the way I understand it.
And I, I couldn't quite interpret it, what it was all about, but it's, it's quite a bit of paper.
Yeah, I sent you the laws and everything to go along with it, so.
I'm going to defer to Bill on this one. Do you, do we need any kind of an official action, do you think, on that, or just let the minutes reflect that we have, county council has reviewed?
Yeah, I haven't seen it, so I'd have, I'd defer to Donna if that's what the state board told her.
Okay. Do we need to take action or get a motion in a second?
Just said the minutes had to reflect that you did review it, and then I'm supposed to email him today and say council met today, and in their meeting, they did state that they reviewed the plan.
I, I would recommend a motion to receive the report.
Yeah, say you received it, reviewed it, or.
Okay. Somebody would want to make, well, I'd entertain a motion that, that we received and reviewed the report.
Some of.
Second.
Got a motion from Larry, second from Jessica. Any questions from council?
It, it does predict up to twenty twenty-three in there. It's, it's, it's a pretty extensive report, and it's a little hard to understand what the motivation of the statute was.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bloodsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes. Anything, any comments from council members?
Call? Sure. So I know I bring this up often, but the blood center's always in need of blood, and I recently donated, and they're doing COVID antibody testing now. So if you ever had any interest in finding out if you possibly have had COVID and want to know if you have the antibodies, they are doing that as part of the blood donation process. So little incentive to maybe get some folks in, raise a sleeve, save a few lives. Pretty simple to do.
Thank you, Jessica.
Yep, no questions have come in via our email, or I haven't seen anything on the Facebook page either, just some statements, comments pertaining to state level information.
Also, Scott, the Association of Indiana Counties is going on now, and the commissioners have paid for the, for this event, so any of us in Delaware County can, can view any, hi, Sheriff, can view any of these online. Yesterday, I, I listened to the one called "Review of Public Records and Open Door Law After the Executive Order." There's probably one on here that will, that would interest, at least one on here that would interest every one of you. What can you do about assisting your employees in pharmacy costs and protect their workplace? A roadmap to recover and reset here, what other counties are doing, trends and tools that are changing rural Indiana. The one that's going on right now is by Kent Irwin, and Kent always manages to put something in about Delaware County, and I think we're getting a shout-out today, too. So you might want to watch the one with Kent. State House report, ten top reasons it's time to update your zoning and subdivision ordinances and using local data for local solutions of public health and welfare. That might be a, be an interesting one. But anyway, we are all registered. We can all review